This age we live in.
Yeah.
It is.
Today is more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two, three days out.
Two minutes to speak.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
House and fire station for you.
Yeah.
Is it tomorrow?
Uh, there is supposed to be an open house by all.
It's on Friday.
Yeah.
Eleven o'clock.
Station.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening and welcome to the May 23 meeting of the Bela Vista City Council. Will you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with which we do come.
Do the roll call of council. Councilmember Wasniak.
Here.
Lynn.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Burke.
Present.
Mel.
Here.
Oliver.
Here.
All present. Thank you. We move on to citizen input.
Which one do you want?
The first is Nina Berger, please.
I just came here.
Yeah, go up to the mic, please. Is the mic on? Yeah.
I'm here because of my concern over our Street 8 Sidlaw Hills Drive.
Go ahead.
Um, and how fast the workers are driving up and down our street. Luckily, we're too old to have children. But we do have pets.
What street is that?
Eight Sidlaw Hills Drive in Bel Vista.
So Chief, Sidlaw Hills, speeding on Sidlaw Hills is the query?
It doesn't ring at all, but we can definitely look into it.
Okay, good.
Oh, I called the police, but I didn't get a response.
Okay, Chief, I sit right back there.
Okay, that was my main concern.
No, that's well taken. I'm glad you brought it up. And if I may, I'll share your address and your telephone number with Chief as well.
Okay.
Great stuff.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Lynn.
Hi, my name is Lynn Goldbeck. I live at 13 Sidlaw Hills Drive, across the street from Nina Berger. Those are two years of Don Robinson who was on this planning commissioner for 14 years. He was here tonight, but he has unmedical issues. He would like to express his power of dealing with this. So I'm here on behalf of both of us. Started fires, started clearing. We know that there have been a lot of ordinances changes, but we had unattended fires, not controlled. Stolen water out of hydrants from a private fire engine from Dewayne Swanson, builder from Gentry. That's been verified. They've been called and listed, they haven't come. Well, they've had fires right next to homes of 40 feet, embers going next to homes. We've got five grandiose homes being built just on Sidlaw Hills and Sidlaw Hills Lane. And so that all started there, clearing the fires. They've been, they didn't come on the 31st, or the 30th of November, even though there was a call. And they didn't show up. And we have somebody who will talk about that. And they left the fire engine, the private fire engine outside of the lot by the 17 home on Sidlaw Hills Lane or Drive. And they left the fires in there, unattended.
And that was back in November?
November 30th, just last year. So then we continued to call the next three nights in a row in the fire department. Did come, but they'd always say it was controlled burns. And it was really pulling keys to get people to come and put the fire valve. And they even tried to call the builder and he didn't answer. In fact, I don't know if you received the petition that it took Dewayne Jurtson that was signed by all our neighbors about this very thing. And I saw you were on vacation and brought it down to the city hall.
Yeah, that was quite a while back.
And you did give it to this mayor? Well, Lois Adams, who was on 22 Sidlaw Hills Drive, this two houses being built on two lots there. Dewayne Swanson right here, one, yes, phone number, he asked me to watch fire and call if needed attention. Phil Tanker, the fire truck from the hydrant at 18th Sidlaw Hills Drive. Drove tracco down the street. We even had water meters pulled up out of, and the whole pipe broke. And it was like that for a long time till the P O A come fixed it. It is not fixed yet because they just put the cap back on, so there's a hole where the water cap was off. Block mailbox is for two days. That's her writing right here. She can't make it tonight either. So I'm reading this, what she wrote on this petition. We've tried everything we can. They had to put fires out each time. It was three fires. Raised a lot of water, a lot of time, a lot of state of city materials.
And when was that, Lynn?
That was on the first and second and third of December, you know, three nights in a row.
So we're back to December?
Mm-hmm. So then we thought, okay, so.
The time is up, man.
Time is up. Can I get an extension on the litter?
No.
Okay, well, somebody else will talk about that. I've got pictures I've sent to Jerry Snow, by the way.
Okay.
He hasn't, thank you.
Great, thank you. Chris Nelson?
Chris Nelson, on 1 Harrington Drive. Sent multiple emails, apparently they're going to junk. Going to echo the same sentiment. We've called about illegal dumping on our street in January. Wife called back in March. Three other residents called. One resident actually met with you in your office. Seems to be a lack of follow through issue going on. Just need people to start taking their job seriously and start having some accountability.
Name of the resident, please?
Mary Green.
Oh, yes, okay. She actually called me.
She called you and she met with you and there was still no follow through. Believe it was May night, reported illegal dumping again, vegetative material. Sent an email again. Called the non-emergency police line, no response, no follow through. Sent an email to you and the chief of police, no follow up after it was found in junk. The only person that followed up was Doug Tap, so I appreciate that. That's, I'm here to support Jerry Snow and you wanted to see people out here, so that's why I'm here.
I believe I followed up and you followed up. Immediately, right?
Yeah.
But he got taken care of, right?
When he came back into town, the lack of follow up stopped.
That's because everything went to junk mail.
Yeah. So I might want to follow up on your email system to make sure that residents' emails are coming through. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is it Mark Warsaw?
My name is Mark Warsaw, 5 Buckingham Drive. I just had a few questions. First one, the lot clearing burn permit application I'm looking at here. I tried to reach out to Jason Bowman today, several occasions. Excuse me. The number on here doesn't go to him. He goes to the city. I was rerouted to several fire stations. I still don't know where he's at to get, I have a lot of questions here on this permit application. How does this process work? You fill out the information, it says emails to Jason Bowman, he clears the permit? Is that my, is that how this works?
Yes, it's the fire marshal.
Okay, so he gives the permit, right? If I'm a builder, I go over, I put it on the tree, I go over and put it on the tree, right? I ask someone to clear it? Who's following up to make sure that the people are getting these permits, don't have criminal backgrounds or any other information like that? I mean, who, if you're building 4,000 houses, pretty good chance that you're going to have 4,000 clearing permits, wouldn't you agree?
Mm-hmm, sure.
So who oversees that at that point?
Mr. Tap.
Okay. So he's responsible for these, because on several occasions, I've been out to these lots, there's no, there's no signage, saying that lots are being cleared. In a lot of cases, they're burning and nobody's around.
Doug, don't they have to post the permit? It's the erosion permit, E and G.
That's correct, Mary. I don't know that a burning permit has to be posted, but G E C does.
So there should be some information that's provided when I enter the lot, if it's burning, right? Because I haven't seen it. And it says here on the sheet, it says contractor. A lot of these guys have people clearing the lots that aren't contractors. Are they supposed to be on this too?
You're, you got to address the consequences. Are the people on here supposed to be, the contractor here says for permit application, if he's not a contractor, can he still get a burn permit? That gets my question.
Well, if he's working for a contractor, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. In a lot of cases, they get someone to clear it, right?
That's correct.
Whose responsibility is this? Rolls back to the?
It rolls back to the contractor, not the seller.
Okay. All right. So after it gets approved, it should be in that lot, then it's overseen by Doug Tap, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. My other question was on the city site on sewer hookups. I've asked repeatedly to get updates on that.
The city doesn't have any sewer.
There's a sewer list. I understand it works on the water department, but there's a list that goes back to May that shows which streets are on sewer.
That's maintained by village wastewater.
Okay. So you don't have any responsibility, so when you go to dig up the roads or any of that stuff, it goes under village wastewater?
Correct, Frank Knight is the contact.
Okay. Because I talked to you, Doug, about that. Doug, you remember?
You need to write your comments up to the front.
I talked to Doug Tap about that and he said he'd check into it. He didn't tell me I needed to redirect it to somebody else.
Yeah, Frank Knight is your fellow.
Okay.
K N I G H D.
So who oversees doing that? I got to talk?
Yep, the time's up.
Okay.
We can chat afterwards or you can check what's going to happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Gray?
Good evening, I'm Elizabeth Gray with 12 Presley Lane, and I am currently building a house that is close to being done. And I had my driveway poured and so I contacted the streets department to find about, find out about getting the rest of my cul-de-sac paved, because my lane is paved right up to my property line and just the cul-de-sac section is not. And the nice gentleman at the streets department said that it was his understanding they were no longer paving any unpaved streets, they were only maintaining those that were paved, and that I needed to talk to the city council about getting that component of my street paved, because I'm building and then there's several other homes that are going to be started on that. So that is my question, is how do I proceed with getting the street paved in front of my house like my neighbors have?
Okay. At the response portion, Councilmember Flynn is actually head up of the streets department.
Okay.
I'm sure he'll be glad to tell you.
All right, thank you so much, Chris.
You're welcome. Randy Murray?
Randy Murray, my address is 2551 Forest Hills Boulevard. I just wanted to comment on the variance code changes that were proposed and talked about in the last meeting. I think it's fantastic. That process, it just, it takes a long time. Most people don't own their buildings and they lease their buildings and the leasing process takes a long time. It's expensive and to tie up all that money to try to get the variance, to tie up all that money and waiting on the permit process, and then once you're permitted and everything's approved, then you get to go hunt down in this market, a team of contractors to get started. And the 120 day window is just an impossible task. And so it just makes people have to come back and get another variance and it just, it takes too long. I think we're going to end up bankrupting small businesses trying to wait for it. And so there's a bunch of proposed changes on there and I think they're fantastic. And I think that's the kind of stuff that we need to be seeing more of and with the planning commission and city council. And I'm thrilled to see it on there. And so anyway, I wanted to tell you guys what I thought about that. And I've been on the other side of that coin, you know, waiting on that stuff. And it's just, it's a super expensive process to just sit and wait and sit and wait and sit and wait before you even have the opportunity to go hire people to do the work. And so the 120 day window is not even a possibility, I don't think, in this market. And so anyway, just for your consideration, it was time to talk about that. Thanks.
Thank you. Mark Bean?
Good evening. Mark Bean, I live at 4 Sidlaw Hills Lane in Bel Vista. Neighbors with Nina Berger and Lynn Goldbeck. I want to appreciate everybody for listening to our concerns tonight. I know it's kind of going to be troublesome, but I can attest to all the points that they have made, namely the speeding has been a pretty big issue. My 81-year-old mother lives four doors up from me on Sidlaw Hills Drive, and I can attest that there's a whole lot of cars that drive way past the 25 mile an hour speed limit on that street. So other than that, the fires that we've had that were unattended, there were many, as Lynn attested to. The one that stands out the most was on that November 30th. I was driving up to take care of my mom, she needed some attention, and here I see this bonfire with these sparks that are shooting 40, good 40 feet in the air. And there was a breeze blowing, which was blowing a lot of the sparks right across the roadways. So there I stopped. And I'll tell you, a good way to meet a new neighbor is to stop at a fire and then back into their brick mailbox. I can attest to that. But I just want to make sure that we're aware, I did call the fire department that night. The young man that I did talk to said that he would get somebody out there. We didn't see anybody. There wasn't any, there was no follow through on that whatsoever. So just want to make you aware of that.
Okay, thank you, Mark. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
That ends the citizen input. We'll move now to council reply. John, do you want to get it off with the paving policy?
Sure. Yeah, I believe Elizabeth Gray was the lady's name. Yeah, I'd like to discuss with you afterwards, you know, get the details on it. And, but the paving policy was made more strict in the last year or so at council's behest, actually, that they didn't necessarily want to pave every time there was some new construction, but that doesn't mean it couldn't possibly occur. I would like to talk to you about it. And my contact info is on the website. And I wouldn't mind getting your contact info if you could leave it for me. Let's see, on the other issues that came up, on Sidlaw Hills, I was wondering if the fires are all past tense or if that still could be an issue. And on Randy Murray's comment, I was wondering what he thought about 365 days.
Okay.
Instead of 120.
We're not going to get into a debate, so Randy, is it a thumb up or thumb down on 365?
I think, I think two years is probably better than one.
Okay. Lynn, are the fires still going?
Well, we had no dumpsters.
I'm sorry?
We, there was no dumpsters at these building sites.
Okay.
So what happened is they burned the treated lumber after these fires, after they got, we got the dumpsters through Jerry Snow and Doug.
Okay, but are the fires still occurring?
No, not now, but they did burn after that with the treated lumber instead of putting it in the dumpster. So they did continue after that, even after they were told not to burn, they continued to burn the treated lumber rather than put it in the dumpster that was delivered, because they made a mess everywhere. And never, and it was such a mess that that dumpster wasn't being used almost on purpose because they didn't put anything in it, they just burned it.
Okay.
And the rest of it's still strewn around.
Okay, thanks, Lynn.
Mm-hmm.
All right, anybody else who should come in?
Yeah, I will. So we have a lot of new build activity taking place in Bel Vista. I know, I think we all agree to that, right? New construction is a messy business. I think we can all agree to that as well. Everyone, you know, would like to see a new build, you know, probably look like a park type atmosphere, but I think we all agree that that is probably not possible either. And I'm not going to stand here, I'm not going to make excuses for anyone. There's so much going on that it's just impossible to keep up with all of it. I've been on council now for five and a half years, and I made a huge effort to get out and get to know everyone. Directors of the different apartments, employees in the different departments, no matter which, whether it's CDS or streets, police, fire, et cetera. And of course, the conversation about construction and what's taking place with the builders and et cetera, that falls in the department of CDS primarily. We could talk to the fire department if in fact we think there's going to be a burn take place and we want to have a question whether it's been approved or not. And I will have, I will tell you that it's been a couple of times recently when I was made aware that it looked like there's a big burn pile being pushed up and it looks like it could potentially burn. And I called Chief Sims and they were out on the site immediately. And both of the sites informed contractors that they would not be allowed to burn. You know what happened with one of them? The contractor went ahead and started to burn anyway. Fire department showed up, put the fire out immediately, and they were issued a citation and they had to pay a $500 fine. And I would like to say that that's not a one-off, that although contractors know what they can and what they cannot do, they will go ahead and see what they can get by with. It's like, and with some of them, I don't want to make a blanket statement about all of them, but some of them are like junior high kids. They're just going to see what they can get by with. But what I'd like to get back to is the situation with all the home builds we have going on here. It's impossible to manage all of them. It just is. It's impossible to manage day-to-day operations. People are coming and going all the time. And what bothers me is the constant barrage that the CDS department has to endure day after day after day after day. I know these people, I know really well. They're terrific people. They work really hard at their jobs. They care very deeply about what they do. We also, you know, we have Doug and we have Derek, we have Megan, we have Taylor, et cetera. And as I said, I've got to know them all really well. And sometimes I would like for maybe each one of you to go work with these people for one day, just to see what it is that they do and what they're faced with. I'm not going to make excuses for all the contractors and what they do on their different builds from day to day to day. I wish that they were all perfect and I wish we didn't face these situations. Lynn, so I live on 4 Colleen Drive. Do you know where that is?
Yes, you're behind us pretty much.
Yeah, I live down the hill.
It's going to be on the south side.
I live down the hill. I know Sidlaw Hills very well. I've lived there for 15 years. When you called me, I came up. I didn't even know there were five builds taking place up there quite frequently, because I don't go up that way all the time, especially back around, down the hill and back up the street. I go up, I go Allison, you know, out to Ardwell. And you had two concerns. One was a fire situation, right? And the other one was cleanliness of the lots. Well, what I, the fire portion of it, I actually called Chief Sims and asked him about it. He said, well, the last instance of a call that they had had that they had logged was in December. So that was past the time that I could have addressed it or tried to do anything or help you out with it as far as like making people aware. So I'm not really aware of what happened as far as these burns are that were taking place. As far as like the lots were concerned, every house, as far as I know, has a dumpster. And I drove by each one of those lots and yeah, I saw construction and some materials and stuff setting out outside, but I didn't see anything outside the norm of what might be taking place at a new home build. And so I'll say this, this is the day that when I went up there, right? So we're talking like one point in time. But I followed up and I went up like either that afternoon or the next morning, I don't remember. And I was like, well, I mean, yeah, it's new construction, yeah, it's a little messy, it's, you know, a lot of dirt, a lot of mud, but one house, I saw a couple of plastic bottles outside. I saw one in a ditch and kind of wandered on the edge of a tree line, you know. Yeah, I wish I wasn't there, but I was, but the other ones were really just not bad, in my humble opinion. That's my humble opinion, okay? I don't remember what else I was going to say. I know it's frustrating. Oh, what I was going to say is, just, everybody needs to remember as well that their home hasn't existed where it does from the beginning, forever. At some point, at some time, that lot was cleared and that home was built, and it was probably just as messy and it could have been more messy than the house that might be being built next door or across the street. It's just messy, period. It's inconvenient, I get it. Again, I wish it were perfect. It isn't. I will tell you, every time someone has called me to ask for assistance or any help I might be able to give them and get a certain situation taking place, technical help, I have done that. Every single time, CDS and fire has followed up, like immediately, and taken care of the issue, taken care of the problem, contacted the contractor or whatever. And you got to remember too, as hard as it is, there are contractors, but there are so many subcontractors coming and going all the time, it's just hard to manage the whole thing. So just, you know, all I ask you to keep that in mind too. If you have any issues, call one of the city council members, because they might have a little bit more direct line or contact with an individual that they might need to talk to in order to try to get something taken care of. And Chris, you alluded, right, that you didn't get any response, but you didn't talk about when you called me, I came straight out with Doug Tap. We looked it all over, we tried to follow up, we tried to figure out what was going on with illegal dumping. What I found fascinating is that had to be kind of a big deal, when whoever brought that deck in there and dumped it. And what's fascinating is we, no one ever said they saw anything or they heard anything so they could give us a heads up for who it might be. We still don't know who dumped the deck. It could have been whoever owned those two lots. But I got an email from Doug today, or yesterday, saying that the guy that owns those two lots, he had grading permits, he could clear the lot, he has building permits and everything else. So he is allowed some leeway on those lots, not saying he can dump on it necessarily, certain materials. But all I would, will let you know, is that as soon as I was made aware of it, we followed up and we tried to get the situation taken care of, and you know it.
I was three months in, though.
Well, that might be, but I wasn't involved any time before that, any time before then. So I do know that you did get a response and the situation did get taken care of. Now, this isn't a go back and forth. This is by time.
I just want to say, I did get it from the city council. Jerry Snow has pictures, at least three pictures of litter.
Okay, Lynn, yep. A jury can show us later.
That's what he can show you, that's all.
Yeah. Doug, anything else?
No.
Steve?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to all of the public input speakers tonight. You know, I think if there is a thread that ran through a number of those feedbacks, it was responsiveness. And I think, I think when, I think the city is really in the business of providing service to our citizens and to our residents. And so I think that feedback is useful. And I think it helps us understand where we're at and whether we're meeting the needs. And I'm sure no service business bats a thousand, but we should aspire to be complete and thorough in the feedback and the response that we give to citizens when they're inquiring. So that's real, and I think our department heads get to hear it here in a public forum. I think that's useful. And not to be defensive about it, but to always be looking at, this is our business, this is what we do. How can we do it a little bit better? How can we do it better next time? And I could give instances of where I've called the fire department and they've responded immediately to an unattended fire on our street. That's not really the point. The point isn't where we did right. The point is how consistently are we meeting the expectations of our residents?
...treated lumber instead of putting it in the dumpster. So they did continue after that, even after they were told not to burn, they continued to burn treated lumber rather than put it in the dumpster that was delivered because they made a mess everywhere and never, and it was such a mess that that dumpster wasn't being used almost on purpose because they didn't put anything in it, they just burned it.
Okay.
And the rest of it's still strewn around.
Okay, thanks Lynn.
Mm-hmm.
All right, anybody else wish to comment?
Yeah, well, um, so we have a lot of, uh, new build activity taking place in Belavista. I know, I think we all agree to that, right? New construction is a messy business. I think we can all agree to that as well. Everyone, you know, would like to see a new build, you know, probably look like a park-type atmosphere, but I think we all agree that that is probably not possible either. And I'm not going to stand here, I'm not going to make excuses for anyone. There's so much going on that it's just impossible to keep up with all of it. I, I've been on council now for five and a half years and I made a huge effort to get out and get to know everyone, directors of the different apartments, employees in the different, in the different departments, no matter which, whether it's CDS or streets, police, fire, et cetera. And of course, the, the conversation about construction and what's taking place with the builders and et cetera, that falls in the department of CDS primarily. We, we could talk to the fire department if in fact we think there's going to be a burn take place and we want to have a question whether it's been approved or not. And I will have, I will tell you that it had been a couple of times recently when I was made aware that it looked like there's a big burn pile being pushed up and it looks like it could potentially burn and I called Chief Sims and they were out on the site immediately. And both of the sites informed contractors that they would not be allowed to burn. You know what happened with one of them? The contractor went ahead and started to burn anyway. Fire department showed up, put the fire out immediately and they were issued a citation and they had to pay a $500 fine. And, and I always like to say that that's not a one-off, that although contractors know what they can and what they cannot do, they will go ahead and see what they can get by with. It's like, and with some of them, I don't want to make a blanket statement about all of them, but some of them are like junior high kids. They're just going to see what they can get by with. But what I'd like to get back to is the situation with all the home builds we have going on here. It's impossible to manage all of them. It just is. It's impossible to manage day-to-day operations. People are coming and going all the time. And what bothers me is the constant barrage that the CDS department has to endure day after day after day after day. I know these people, I know really well. They're terrific people. They work really hard at their jobs. They care very deeply about what they do. We also, you know, we have Doug and we have Derek, we have Megan, we have Taylor, et cetera. And as I said, I've got to know them all really well. And sometimes I would like for maybe each one of you to go work with these people for one day, just to see what it is that they do and what they're faced with. I'm not going to make excuses for all the contractors and what they do on their different builds from day to day to day. I wish that, that they were all perfect and I wish we didn't face these situations. Lynn, so I live on Four Colleen Drive. Do you know where that is?
Yes, you're behind us pretty much.
Yeah, I live down the hill.
It's going to be on the south side.
I live down the hill, I know Sid Law Hill's very well, I've lived there for fifteen years. When you called me, I came up, I didn't even know there were five builds taking place up there quite frequently because I don't go up that way all the time, especially back around, up, down the hill and back up the street. I go up, I go Allison, you know, out to Ardwell. And you had two concerns. One was a fire situation, right? And the other one was cleanliness of the, of the lots. Well, what I, the fire portion of it, I actually called Chief Sims and asked him about it. He said, well, the last instance of a call that they had had that they had logged was in December. So that was past the time that I could have addressed it or tried to do anything or help you out with it as far as like making people aware. So I'm not really aware of what happened as far as these, these burns are that were taking place. As far as like the lots were concerned, every house, as far as I know, has a dumpster. And I drove by each one of those lots and yeah, I saw construction and some materials and stuff setting out outside, but I didn't see anything outside the norm of what might be taking place at, at a new home build. And so I'll say this, this is the day that when I went up there, right? So we're talking like one point in time. But I, I followed up and I went up like either that afternoon or the next morning, I don't remember. And I was like, well, I mean, yeah, it's new construction, yeah, it's a little messy, it's, you know, a lot of dirt, a lot of mud, but one house, I saw a couple of plastic bottles outside, I saw one in a ditch and kind of wandered on the edge of a tree line, you know. Yeah, I wish I wasn't there, but I was, but the other ones were really just not, not bad in my humble opinion. That's my humble opinion, okay? I don't remember what else I was going to say. I know it's frustrating, oh, what I was going to say is, just, everybody needs to remember as well that their home hasn't existed where it does from the beginning, forever. At some point, at some time, that lot was cleared and that home was built and it was probably just as messy and it could have been more messy than the house that might be building, be being built next door across the street. It, it's just messy, period. It's, it's inconvenient, I get it. Again, I wish it were perfect, it isn't. I will tell you, every time someone has called me to, to, to ask for assistance or any help I might be able to give them and get a certain situation taking place, technical help, I have done that. Every single time, CDS and fire has followed up, like immediately, and taken care of the issue, taken care of the problem, contacted, contacted the contractor or whatever. And you got to remember too, as hard as it is, there are contractors, but there are so many subcontractors coming and going all the time, it's just hard to manage the whole thing. So, uh, just, you know, all I ask you to keep that in mind too. If you have any issues, call one of the city council members because they might have a little bit more direct line or contact with an individual that they might need to talk to in order to try to get something taken care of. And Chris, you alluded, right, that you didn't get any response, but you didn't talk about when you called me, I came straight out with Doug Tab. We looked it all over, we tried to follow up, we tried to figure out what was going on with illegal dumping. What I found fascinating is that had to be kind of a big deal when whoever brought that deck in there and dumped it. And what's fascinating is we, no one ever said they saw anything or they heard anything so they could give us a heads up or who it might be. We still don't know who dumped the deck. It could have been whoever owned those two lots. But I got an email from Doug today, or yesterday, saying that the guy that owns those two lots, he had grading permits, he could clear the lot, he has building permits and everything else, so he is allowed some leeway on those lots. Not saying he can dump on it necessarily, certain materials, but all I would let you know is that as soon as I was made aware of it, we followed up and we tried to get the situation taken care of, taken care of, and you know it.
I was three months in though.
Well, that might be, but I wasn't involved any time before that, any time before then. So I do know that you did, uh, get, get a response and, and the situation did get, did get taken care of. Now, this isn't a go back and forth, this is by time.
I just want to say I did get the city council, Jerry Snow has pictured at least three pictures of literally.
Okay Lynn, yep. Jury can show us later.
That's what he can show you, that's all.
Yeah. Doug, anything else?
No.
Steve?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to all of the public input speakers tonight. You know, I think if there is a thread that ran through a number of those feedbacks, it was responsiveness. And I think, I think when, uh, the, I think the city is really in the business of providing service to our citizens and to our residents. And so I think that feedback is useful and I, I think it helps us understand where we're at and whether we're meeting the needs. And I'm sure no service business bats a thousand, uh, but we should aspire to be complete and thorough in the feedback and, and the response that we give to citizens when they're acquiring. So that's real and I think our department heads get to hear it here in a public forum. I think that's useful and not to be defensive about it, but to always be looking at, this is our business, this is what we do. How can we do it a little bit better? How can we do it better next time? And I could give instances of where I've called the fire department and they've responded immediately to an unattended fire on our street. That's not really the point. The point isn't where we did right. The point is how consistently are we meeting the expectations of our residents? And that's a high bar, but it is one we ought to aspire to.
Okay, on the other side, anyone?
Just a second. Just a couple of comments. I guess my, in my experience in working with the DCD and the fire department, police department, they've all been, all been responsive and not necessarily directly to me, but in terms of issues that have come up. We did adopt revisions last year that created a permitting process for lot burns because of the problems that were, we were encountering and experiencing. That became a, a, a big issue. The result of that was that the fire department streamlined it so you can do an online application. It's reviewed and processed online and then there's some requirements of the applicant to notify the fire department when they're going to do the burn. And if it's not a good time, they're told at that point that they can't burn on that day or that week. Whatever the case may be, it might be a drought, a dry period, so they can't burn for the week. Might be a wind condition, so they need to call and notify the fire department. They can call actually five minutes before they, they start the fire, but they do need to call and notify them. So they can be, they can be fined for that. If anyone sees them doing something that doesn't make sense, call the non-emergency number at the fire department, ask about the permit. If it looks like it's too windy and they're still burning out there, there's things blowing, ashes blowing over. So there are reasons for, for doing that. Some of the builders are jobbers, which means that they do nothing themselves, they have no workforce. They subcontract every activity that goes on in building a house. And we have a number of those. It's, it's a business and so the builder will sign the documents, but he may not have or lift a finger on doing any of the work. It's all sucked out. So those are all challenges that we face in terms of administration.
Thank you, Mr. Snow.
Yeah, just briefly, I, we're in the business of public service and these people are our customers, so, and if it was a retail establishment or something and, and they called on them and did not get the service that they were supposed to get, they go someplace else. But in our situation, they don't have that opportunity. It's, we, we are supposed to deal with those matters and, but it seems like maybe that we're getting into a situation of, of, it sounds to me like some excuses. We've got a lot of excuses as to why we're not doing certain things. We got too much to do, we got an overload, we got more work to, to take care of than we got the people to take care of it. I, I, I don't know what the answer is to, 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 to improve on that service. I know what the answer is, but I don't know that, I don't think I have the, the, the ability to, to make that, to happen. So again, uh, thanks to everyone for your comments and for what you had to say tonight and, and hope that if you have a problem, you got an issue, that you'll continue to reach out to the proper department. If you don't get an answer there, well then, you call one of us. I know I try myself to be responsive to the people that call and, uh, I, because I believe in, I believe in customer service. I believe in, in being of service to the people that, that pay our, that, that support us. That's it.
Okay, Chief?
Well, you know, these people aren't looking for excuses, they're looking for results. If it's the fact that we don't have enough people to take care of what they want, well, then we need to go and put some more people on. If they are in fact recording as they say they are, and I have no reason to believe that they're not, you know, if you're talking to a dispatcher or a fireman, you know, if they can give us date and time and stuff, almost everything gets recorded, find out who's not passing the information on and find out what's going there.
Okay, thank you.
Can, can I?
Yeah, so I agree with Steve's comments. You know, uh, we're in business of customer service, right? We want to satisfy the residents of the city. We would aspire to that a thousand percent. Fact is, that's, that's a pretty, that's a pretty, pretty tall task, okay? And I will tell you that when CDS, when something slips by and they're not aware of it and they got to go out and take care of it, they're disappointed, you know? I interact with them all the time. And I'm, and the thing about me is, uh, I'm not making excuses for them, but I'm not going to throw them under the bus either because I know how hard they work and I know how, how hard they strive to service the residents of this community. Wish it was a perfect world, but it isn't. And I hear your concerns. I mean, I, today, out of my truck, I drove around for two hours just finding new builds, just looking at it, just seeing what's going on. And, you know, most of them were pretty good. I don't know what perfect is, but they were pretty good. A couple of them, I took photos of them, I'm going to contact Doug's staff tomorrow, see if we can have to follow up and see if we can't get something about, done about it. So I do appreciate your comments, but everybody works really hard to, to service the residents of Belavista. Trust me, I know for a fact.
Okay, thank you. Thank you one and all for your comments tonight. That was good.
And Mayor, just one thing. Randy, you gave us a four-digit address for where you live on Forest Hills?
Yep.
There aren't many houses on Forest Hills, just exactly more or less, where is that?
Uh, yeah, so where the new police station is, um, I'm just south of that, six, seven, the next two buildings, yeah.
You're the last house in the city, aren't you, Randy?
I'm pretty much the end of the line, so.
All right, thank you.
All righty, thank you one and all. I'm sorry ma'am, the, the sign up was earlier to be able to talk. The counselors, counselors are, I'm sorry?
What time do you have to, I was here at 6:25, I didn't see anything to sign up.
Yep, the list was over by the front where everybody was signing up. Now, if, if you want, you can speak to us afterwards.
Okay, I would love to.
Sure.
I'd make a motion, we let him talk.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to make a motion, we let him talk, he gets three minutes.
I would second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
It's fine with me.
Okay. Wayne?
Okay, you want to do a roll call on that?
Yep.
Councilmember Wasniak?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Terry?
Okay, sir, you were first. Do you want to come up and?
Yeah, great, thank you, I really appreciate it.
Could you give us your name, address?
Yeah, my name's Greg Hasting and I'm a resident of 34 Constant Circle here in Belavista. I'm speaking to you all today because I'd like to try to add an ordinance or see what I have to do to add an ordinance that prohibits the chaining, tethering, or troweling of dogs in unfenced areas. I'd like to adopt an ordinance similar to the language of Mamaw Arkansas, which states, animals may not be tethered to any person that own any animals, whether vaccinated or unvaccinated, licensed or unlicensed, shall find such animal within an adequate fence or enclosure or within a house, garage, or other building. Animals shall not be tied or chained to dog houses or other stationary objects, but must be in an approved enclosure. I want to do this for a few different reasons. The first reason that that is, it's unsightly and does not fit the aesthetic appearance that I think Belavista tries to promote. For the same reason that people aren't allowed to store their RVs or boats in the driveways or have cars sitting on cinder blocks, I think that residents should not be allowed to have dogs untethered in unfenced areas because it's unsightly. And a big part of the reason it's unsightly is because of the inhumane nature of the activity. The second, more important reason is that it poses a safety hazard to the residents of Belavista, particularly young children. Twenty-five percent of all fatal dog attacks from 1965 to 2001 were inflicted by chained dogs and thirty percent of children aged one to nine killed by dogs in the U.S. between 1989 and 1994 died after wandering too close to a chained animal, chained dog. Furthermore, a study by the CDC found that chained dogs are 2.8 times more likely to bite and tend to exhibit more aggressive behavior than dogs that are not tethered. Aggressive dogs are more likely to bark as well, which also creates a nuisance for the surrounding houses. Belavista is a community that encourages outdoor recreation and people should not have to worry about a tethered dog attacking them or their children while they walk, play, or ride their bike outside. In my personal situation, our neighbor is a woman in her late eighties that has a ninety-pound boxer that is aggressive, energetic, energetic and unsupervised in her front yard for hours a day. She's not physically capable of handling a dog that size and I'm worried that one day the dog will break free of its tether. Every time it is outside and I leave my house, it runs to the end of its tether and aggressively barks at me and my wife and everybody else who passes by. This has been going on for months and I do not think that any resident of Belavista should have to deal with this every time they bring in groceries, do yard work, get their mail, or walk by their neighbor's house. Additionally, I will be having small children play out there in the future and I do not want to worry about them being attacked by a large, aggressive, unsupervised tethered dog. Adding an ordinance like the one that I suggested would be beneficial for all residents, both human and canine in Belavista, and I'd like to see our great CDV like many others that have adopted ordinances of this nature. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Hasting.
The motion was only to allow him to talk, not to allow more than they, and they just made it through. Okay, another vote. Chief, you want to put it on?
Were you here on time?
Well, we got the wrong address and went the other way instead of coming west, going east, so that's why we're related.
Okay, you got something other than different from what we heard tonight?
I, I just was wondering if y'all had talked about the Airbnbs.
Oh, yeah, we're working on a.
No, that hasn't come in front of council yet.
Oh.
Okay, that.
We were told that it, it was tonight.
No, no, the earliest will be next month.
Okay.
Our agendas are online.
Okay, that was all I needed to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
All righty. Anybody want to talk anymore?
Yes, my understanding was that you're not allowed to tether a dog from a single point, that you're required to have a stringer between two posts, two trees, with a sliding loop that can run on that tether line to allow the dog movement so that it can't get wrapped up or tied up or choked up so that it has free roam to go.
So I looked into what the ordinance on this are and there's actually nothing about it. There's noise ordinances that are on paper here, but there's nothing really about the nature of that, but the tether I don't think really is in order.
Okay, the person you want to talk to, if you turn over on your left shoulder, that's our animal control officer right there, Leslie Ann Pratt. And I know that she's well aware of this and we shared your email, which is basically what you read tonight.
Yes.
With her. So if you want to have a chat with her, by all means do so. If you don't want to hear the rest of the stuff, you can go out into the corridor and have a chat and I know she'd be more than happy to do so.
Right, thank you.
Okay? All right. Let's move on to the approval of the minutes of the April 25th regular meeting. Are there any errors or omissions?
Vote to be approved.
Second.
Okay, that's moved by Mr. Snow and seconded by Mr. Fowler.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Great, roll call vote. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Terry, six zero.
Thank you. Financial reports. Kim has sent out February, March, April, we're now finally caught up. I won't do the February and March, but in the April one, I'm pleased to report that the city sales tax is 27% increase over the budget and the county is actually 5% over the budget. And if you're a member, there's some concerns about the county. And so these good numbers actually mean that we're $406,688 over the budget as far as the revenue surplus and that'll come into our discussion later for Chief Gray's request, which if you remember, we denied at the budget time for more people because we wanted to see what the impact was going to be on the sales tax. So we're in excellent financial shape. There is a copy, I guess they're all gone, but you can get them from City Hall and they've also been posted on the webpage if you'd like to see our latest financial statements. I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda, the title only.
So I'll move.
Second.
Mr. Wilms and Mr.?
Flynn.
All right, roll call vote. Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Terry, six zero.
Thank you. In the new business, we have an ordinance, amending section 109-42, variances to the code of ordinances of the city of Belavista to remove time limits of zoning variances to reduce the required review criteria for zoning variances, to remove parking, reduction considerations from administrative review and for other purposes. Staff is requesting third and final reading. Mr. Wilms, I understand that you have an amendment?
I do. I'd like to make a few comments about the proposed request for variance. The proposal is to reduce the criteria for considering a variance by the Board of Zoning Adjustment. A variance is really a request to get a permanent approval to break the law in the city of Belavista. It's the same in other cities where variances are dealt with, but literally they're asking to break the law for a particular reason. Those reasons are held high in terms of standards. The reasons that we have now, started out as a basic group of five and that basic group of five deals with five concepts. And one is preservation of intent, another one is exceptional circumstance, another one is hardships which are not grounds for a variance. In other words, a self-imposed hardship is not a reason for a variance and unimposed hardship can be a reason. Preservation of property rights of that zoning district and then absence of detriment, meaning absence of detriment to adjacent or surrounding properties. So those are the traditional five. Those were modulated into eight, eight factors. They become cumbersome. So the planning staff proposed an amendment to follow the state criteria for variances and their, their criteria are broad, but cover those areas, but in three steps rather than in five steps or eight steps. So they believe that administratively it will be more cost-effective for them to do it that way and I think we need to try that and see how it works. My request tonight for the proposed amendment or proposed ordinance adopting those changes is twofold. One is that I agree with eliminating the, you know, parking standards. So we have no parking standards for commercial. It's up to each business to make sure they have enough parking on their facility to accommodate their needs and business order. Secondly, is that a proposal in this request is to eliminate any time or sunset provision on the variance granted. I think like a building permit, it has a time of performance on it commensurate with the time to reasonably start a project. A variance should have that same standard. There are unscrupulous folks out there, I've been in this business for close to 50 years now, dealing with the public with variances, with zoning issues and codes. And there are people out there who will take advantage of getting a variance approval and then using it to improve their position on their property that they want to sell or market or, or construct. And it's not for their, not for the benefit necessarily of the situation, but it's for personal gain. And so I would propose that we have an amendment that would replace the time limit there. I think it's 120 days. To extend that time limit as a sunset of 365 days. Attorney Kelly passed out a draft of that language for you tonight. So I would submit that as a proposed, uh, motion to amend to bring time, a time of performance back into it.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion to amend from Mr. Wilms, a second from Mr. Burke.
And that's what's on.
And that's the one that Mr. Kelly held up for it. Okay? I think there were some copies back there as well.
There's a handful of them.
And they're on the table, okay. Discussion, gentlemen?
I would just say, Mayor, that I, I think it's practical to have some kind of end date on it and I think a year is adequate to give people the opportunity to start the establishment of their variance. They don't have to finish it by then, they have to start it by then. It seems, seems practical and fair to me.
Okay, anybody else?
Well, I kind of agree with Mr. Wilms' concept that having it totally open and maybe wasn't a good idea, then there should be some kind of limit. So I, I see where he's going with that.
Okay, now you got a thing?
A year's sufficient.
Okay, anybody on this side?
Okay.
We have an amendment on the floor. It's been moved and seconded, and we'll go for roll call.
Okay, roll call vote on the amendment. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lozniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Terry, six zero.
Okay, I entertain a motion to suspend the rules. Did you want to say something, Mr. Kelly? I'm sorry.
I was just gonna...
Okay.
I was just saying you were...
To suspend the rules and move to third and final for the amended ordinance.
Second.
I think that was Mr. Flynn and Mr. Wills?
Lozniak and Wills.
Oh, Lozniak and Wills, sorry, John.
Sorry.
Okay, is there any further discussion before? I'm sorry, I'm going to read it. Okay.
Well, you got to vote first, go to the third reading.
Yep, now, so I'm going to read it now. Okay.
You got to have a vote first.
Oh, okay, all right.
Before you go to third.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lozniak?
Yes.
Terry, six zero.
Okay, amending Section 109-42 Variances to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to remove time limits of zoning variances, to reduce the required review criteria for zoning variances, to remove parking reduction considerations from administrative review and for other purposes as amended.
That's the third reading.
Third and final read.
One of the orders, I may. Do we need to change the title?
No.
Okay.
Anyone else?
What you do approve.
Second.
Mr. Lozniak and Mr. Wills? All right, roll call vote again. Councilmember Lozniak?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Lozniak?
Again, yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Terry, six zero.
Thank you. The next ordinance is amending Section 107-317 Access Management of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to provide clarification regarding access drive distance from intersections and for other purposes. In your packet this time, there are some diagrams that I think Derek you put together, and it provides a little more clarification on what we were talking about at the work session. Icino prompted here to go to third and final. So is there any discussion at this time, or just move on, and we'll do a second reading next month?
I think the consensus in talking with Derek is to do the first reading, and we'll consider any additions for next month.
All right, fair enough. That's okay, Derek?
Correct.
Okay, then we'll move on to the first resolution of the evening, and that's renaming Mole Lane to Mack Lane. If you remember, we had a petition for this change to honor a gentleman who is now deceased who had lived on that lane. There were very, very few houses, and we had asked the petitioners if they had written approval from the other residents to actually do this, because they'll have to change their address, roll their credit cards, et cetera, et cetera, and they did not. So we asked them to actually give us something in writing that says that they had no objection. As of today, Taylor, we haven't heard anything.
No, yes.
So I'm going to entertain a motion to table until June, because I believe they're in the state, are they not?
In California.
In California? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we table until, what are we, June meeting?
Oh, June?
Second.
Second, Mr. Flynn. Any discussion? Wayne?
All right. Roll call vote. Councilmember Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Lozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Terry, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, expressing the willingness of the City of Bella Vista to utilize federal aid Surface Transportation Block Grant program attributable funds to assist with the construction of the Mercy Way corridor improvements. This and the next one are both Mercy Way Bridge. And so what has happened is we have ended up incurring additional costs from Carroll Electric to move some of the lines. One of the property owners decided at the last minute that he was not going to give Carroll Electric an easement, and therefore the actual positioning of the lines had to change, which is going to cost the city $196,000. So we are asking council's permission to pursue grants to be able to make up 80% of that. And there's two separate grants. This is the first one. It's an SDV grant program, and it's an 80/20. So that's what we're trying to do here, because we want to keep the city exposure on that $7 million project very, very low. We've got it down to about $300,000-something thousand now, Doug?
Mayor, if we, if we receive one of these grants, it'll actually give us a surplus, but you are correct, if we don't get one of the grants, it could be that much.
Okay, fair enough. Are there any questions for Doug and his crew on this? Okay, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I think we got Mr. Flynn and Chief Lozniak.
Yes.
All right, roll call vote. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lozniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Terry, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution is expressing the willingness of the City of Bella Vista to utilize federal aid transportation alternatives program funds to assist with the construction of the Mercy Way corridor improvement. So this is the other grant that we will go after to try and help us reduce this extra cost. The plan is to take the 196 and divide it in half and apply to regional planning for these two grants. Are there any questions at all?
I'd like to acknowledge and thank Emily for her initial effort to bring this to our attention and do the legwork to get this ready to go.
Agreed.
It's a tribute to, I think, the CDS department for that.
Thank you. Okay, is there looking for a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Mr. Fowler, second?
Second.
Mr. Wills?
All right.
Roll call vote again. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Lozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Terry, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a three-year lease contract with Stronghold Data LLC in an amount not to exceed $39,845.70 for the lease of Dell computers and associated equipment. For those of you that are not familiar with this, the city does not buy computers because they go out of date very quickly, and you don't have the support anymore within the twinkling of an eye, which is usually five years. So we lease them, and then we give them back, and we lease new ones back into the fold again. So we have a number of them. We actually have two programs that have come together, and that's why it's a little higher than we normally do. And so this amount of $39,000 and change is actually spread over three years, so that it's $13,282 a year, and the money is in the 2022 budget for this year. Any questions? Move?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by chief, seconded by Mr. Flynn.
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lozniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Terry, six zero.
Okay, thank you. The next resolution is amending the 2022 city budget to appropriate $309,688 in otherwise unappropriated and unrestricted financial reserves to the police department to fund three additional police officers, full-time police officers, including equipment and vehicles and one full-time police records clerk. Back to the previous budget discussion, year-to-date, we are in a very nice situation on our tax income of being $406,688 over the budget, plus we also have cash on hand of almost $17 million. So by our own ordinance, we have to keep 25% of that $17 million on hand for a rainy day. We're actually, when you take the unassigned and look at it and do the math, we're actually at 71%, so we're well ahead of the game. So Chief had asked for these heads, as I mentioned earlier, back during the budget cycle last year, and we asked him to hold off until we had had a chance to review the tax revenue in the first quarter, and lo and behold, we are in good shape. Are there any questions for Chief?
Move to be approved.
Mr. Snow to approve?
Second.
Mr. Flynn, second?
All right. Councilmember Lozniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Terry, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, amending the 2022 city budget to appropriate $1,000 in otherwise unappropriated and unrestricted financial reserves to Department Number 10 Administration to fund minor expenses related to the functions of the Bella Vista Arts Council. Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir, Mayor Christie. This was proposed as a response to recognition of the Arts Council for the good work that they've done, for the Artist of the Month program especially. We understand that the Arts Council has to occasionally take money out of their own pocket for kind of incidental expenses, and this is just a way for the city to take that responsibility for those expenses so that we don't have volunteers having to take money out of their own pocket to volunteer on behalf of the city. So it's nominal amount, and for the year, we're going to allocate $1,000. This will be spent at the mayor's discretion by request of members of the Arts Council.
Okay, are there any questions at all?
What you do approve.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Councilmember Wills?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lozniak?
Yes.
Terry, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution is amending the 2022 city budget to appropriate $15,000 in otherwise unappropriated and unrestricted financial reserves to the Community Development Services Department to fund stipends for members of the Bella Vista Planning Commission, authorizing stipends in the amount of $150 per planning commission meeting for planning commissioners who are not the chair, and $180 per planning commission meeting for the planning commission chair. If you remember, this request had come in through CDS and the planning commission, especially since we have now melded the Board of Zoning Adjustment responsibilities into the planning commission. I did look at the city of, or the cities of Farmington, Lowell, and P Ridge. Farmington is paying $200 a meeting, Lowell $100, and P Ridge $175. So at the work session, we felt that $150 was a happy medium for the commissioners, and then it was suggested that we also give an additional $30 to the chair. Is there any discussion at all? Mr. Wills?
Just one comment. Comment that the City of Centurgan also pays their Board of Zoning Adjustment and their planning commission members for each meeting. The chair is separate, so if the designated chair is not there to chair the meeting, the one acting in the chair position gets the extra payment, because that's what their duty is for that night. So I don't know if our code allows for that, but I would think that there are occasions when our designated chairperson is not there. We do have a designated alternate, I think, for the planning commission, do we not?
There's only one chair of the planning commission at a time, so if this doesn't take any of that into account.
Okay.
It's not the person chairing the meeting, it's the chair. So even if the chair, of course, if the chair missed the meeting, the chair wouldn't be paid anything.
Right.
But it only goes to the chairperson.
Okay, it's designated by title, not by activity at the meeting. So, okay, all right.
That's how it's written, so, of course, it's always up to you.
Move to be approved.
May... Second. Before, before you move forward, I'd just like to say that, actually, before I became a city councilmember, I don't, I don't know that I fully understood the responsibility of a planning commission. If you read Arkansas State statutes, their authority is broad and wide, and there's a lot of responsibility, and we have a lot going on in Bella Vista right now, as we've already, you know, had some conversation about that earlier in the night. And if a planning commission member is fulfilling their full responsibility of the job, it takes a significant amount of time, trust me. I know what each one of us, what we have to do, the research, the homework, et cetera, and I would say that there certainly are months when the planning commission has no less responsibility that would take no less time. So I think this is a really good move, and I think they would fully earn, fully earn these amounts that we're, I think, probably going to approve tonight.
Okay, thank you. I know I had a move.
Peter? I'd just like to say, I agree. I think this is long overdue, really, and the planning commission, ladies and gentlemen, I know, do a great service to the community.
Thank you. All right, roll call?
Can we make the motion again?
No, no, it's already done. Okay, councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lozniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Terry, six zero. The last resolution of the evening is approving the Bella Vista Advertising and Promotion Commission's appointment of Melissa Wells as a Tourism Industry Position Commissioner to fill an unexpired term ending the 31st of July 2024 resulting from the resignation of Ashley Dozier.
No, I'd just like to say, so I'm actually the chair of Discover Bella Vista, otherwise the Advertising Promotion Commission. We've had an open seat for a little while. I think the mayor will attest to this, and some others, we have, you know, different commissions or committees and what have you, and sometimes it's a struggle to fill some of these, these seats, you know, that are required to set on these commissions. So this one's been open for a little while. Melissa, that was brought to my attention by a gentleman, this company that manages the AMP. Melissa is actually, and her husband are the owners of a short-term rental here in Bella Vista. They reside over by Blowing Springs. Melissa is also a physical therapist, specializes in pool therapy, and I can attest that her schedule is really full. But we're really, we're really glad and happy to be able to bring her forward, and I hope she gets approval from the council this evening.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Wayne?
We haven't had a motion.
Okay.
I'll make, I'll make the motion approve.
Second.
Mr. Fowler, Mr. Flynn?
Okay. All right. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Lozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Terry, six zero.
Thank you. Meetings and announcements, the next city council work session will be Monday, June 20th at 5:30 here in the courtroom. The next regular meeting of city council will be Monday, June 27th at 6:30, again here in the court. And the planning commission work session will be June the 2nd at 4:30 in the courtroom. The planning commission regular meeting will be June the 13th at 4:30, also in courts. And the Board of Construction Appeals will be June the 14th, 2022, if required. On behalf of council, I wish all of you a very happy, safe, and Memorial Day weekend. Yes, Larry?
I just want to thank the planning staff for bringing forward the issues that they've been struggling with for a while and allowing us to update the code and making it more effective and useful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Safe journey home, and we are adjourned.